...the meeting at six o'clock. We will begin the morning's meeting with the 8:00 AM.
The greetings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The sole purpose of this meeting is to hold a hearing on the tax care levy increase. That will begin at 6:05.
We're not going to do that time.
We took it on the other way, we took it off the agenda. Public hearing to consider increasing the 2017 Ramsey County property tax levy by 9.13% will be held at the commission room of the Ramsey County Courthouse, 24 Fourth Avenue, Northeast, Unit 6, Devil Lake, North Dakota, on Thursday, September 29th at 6:05 PM. Citizens will have an opportunity to present oral or written arguments regarding the property tax levy. Questions or comments regarding this notice can be addressed to Elizabeth Fisher, Ramsey County Auditor, at this site or by calling 701-662-7009. And an explanation of the mills levy over the last over five years and in the estimate for 2016 to be presented. I guess we need to wait two more minutes. Put it on there? Do we? Should we like copies of that?
Well, I don't know if there does anybody want copies because everybody that got a letter, it's on the back of the letter.
Is there anybody that would like copies of the mill levy sheet? Okay, we will now begin our hearing. Time to start. Are there any here questions on the tax care that are here?
Do you have a question? Actually, that's the next one.
So we can end it then, or?
Somebody has to have a question about an increase. Any of the commissioners have questions on the increases that are proposed?
You said something about a presentation on mill levy increase?
Basically, it was, do you want us, I can give you a copy of it if you want. Did you get a letter from?
Ah, yes.
Okay, let me give you that. I thought Steve had put it on the screen for me, but it's not there. I'll give you a copy real quick.
I'll take your copy too.
I'll just make you all one.
Thank you. The commissioners' audit paperwork on the utility response, the utility companies and the decreases on those. It's understood that there's a valuation decrease of $196,731.
And ignore the letter cut sheet, sorry. I did some work for Steve and I know that I was doing it, so I'm going to make a note. Did you want a copy? Okay, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Can you share with Ron?
We should send out this utilities due, I don't think it explains much of reductions or anything of that kind.
A big reason is as the lowering of their valuations, in order to make our budget work, we had to raise our mills.
You left it?
No, it's here.
This is the utility companies over from last year to this year, considering increases.
This is easier. Thank you.
I can't handle for everybody, so I can go make some more. He says okay, I can hear him after. Okay. Any questions on mill levy?
Can I ask a question? Um, everyone in the audience doesn't have this, but in our budget binders where we had state aid estimates for 2017, where is that valuation for 2016?
It's down, I think between the townships and us, it's about $500,000, so.
Yeah, because here we've got, we've got townships general, and then the fire districts. So ours is, let's see here. Yeah, right around 920,000 between, that's not just us though. That's more than just.
Because they originally, the estimate they gave us for 16, they were overputting that on that also.
So we're going to be down between us the townships of $500,000. Yeah, great, thank you. Appreciate it.
And then the utilities are down, you're like $196,000.
Yeah.
The taxable valuation is going up, but the utilities are down.
You should have utilities if they would have handed out. You know, that's a huge decrease. Well, we've seen, you know, since I've been on the commission, we've seen utilities come up practically every year.
Every year they have gone up since I came.
You know, quite a large increase. If you look at North Dakota Pipeline here, it went down $240,000. And that's the sand bike, the one that was projected to go through the county and over the long haul, it's going to bring in a lot of tax revenue because of the pipeline itself. That explains a bunch as far as where the county ended up raising, you know.
How does that determine? Pardon me, I didn't mean to interrupt. How does that determine who?
They do that themselves.
They do their own.
They do their own.
Look at the railroad there.
So can I do my own then too?
Okay, it's your oil company. Well, yeah, it's through the state assessment board. They sent it to the state and then they argue their argument with them and this is what the state gave me, why they decreased.
Under the comments?
Yeah. Is affected directly from the low price of oil.
But they turned in their own figures.
To the state with where the lines are going through and everything and the state does watch them because they have to get the permit process.
So is this kind of based on what they say their income is after that then?
Right. Because oil right now is, and it's been down for a couple of years. Now it's picking up, so hopefully next year this will show an increase again. But you'll see the electrical, the power tails up, the railroads up a little bit, but the basin pipeline is down, burling can be weighed down, yeah.
I just don't believe that we'll see an increase in the sand bike or pipeline.
With what's going on right now?
Honestly, that's going to go away. I mean, they're not going to put it in.
So this is more of an income tax than a, than a, you know, like a, like a property taxes, value of your property. This is more of a income tax?
No, this goes on, this is part of our taxable valuation. This is a property tax. We tax these companies back. We send them a tax statement.
But you're talking about how they prove what their.
How they determine, how can their assets be going down though? I mean.
They use their income tax. They turn that into the state.
And that's all what their netted assets are based on that.
And they said what was huge was that last year was such an easy winter that the oil companies, we didn't run as much natural gas and stuff through the pipeline and they determined that amount on that. Another thing, Lee, is that the state aid distribution fund has been challenged at the last two or three legislative sessions and the North Dakota Association of Counties took a stand that they weren't going to fight with 0.35% or whatever that was. And we've always asked it, we've always had resolutions to put it up to 0.5 or 0.6% and they're going to push forward with that this year because of what happened this year, saying that we don't get a big enough share. So hopefully in the future, even if theirs does fluctuate, that we'll still get a fair amount. We didn't really even get a fair amount this year because the percentage that we get is too low. We thought we better not bite the hand that feeds us because to get what we were getting and the oil and everything else was going up, we were getting more and more and more every year and this might be reflected with what we got 10 years ago or something, but with everything that was growing, that was growing, so we better leave it alone or we'll mess with it and say, well, break it down a percent every year. Well, now this year, all the counties are merging together and saying that we want to put it up to, I think it was 0.6. Might have to settle at 0.5.
Does anybody have any questions on the five-year mill levy sheets? Basically, if you look at the township and the general fund, that one could be 16 mills now. In the last legislation, they combined all the county loan fund, those employees, Sbica, Compel, advertising, inventory, county fair and county park, all are perfectly in line with that. So really where we're not at our max mills for the general fund and we don't need to go to 16 mills this year.
Everybody understand the human service fund, the maximum of 20 because of the state aid match. But if we don't, if we don't levy 20 mills, the state, the state does not match our mills, we'd get decreased state funding for each mill we're underneath that. And of course, the big talk in the legislature is about whether or not they're going to give further property tax relief by taking over all of costs for human services. That's in, that's in the current governor's budget plan. So we could see a decrease there next year.
Not to contradict, we don't get matched. There are some companies that would be at 17 or 16, it just depends on what your mill is and what your budget.
Right.
There is a match. We got a grant because we were consistently 10 mills over the statewide average because we were at 37, 32, 30.
Right.
Sorry.
No, you're right, no.
So we didn't spend up the 20.
It isn't exactly a match, no. It isn't exactly a match, but without it, we would not get the overage.
The legislators are slowly starting to figure out that social services isn't a local issue that property tax owners should pay for, it's a statewide or national, national issue now and it shouldn't be borne on taxpayers to, it should be borne on the states to fund it. So who better than the state of North Dakota to fund a social service program and just give the money that's supposed to go to the districts or the departments and then let them figure out how to use it.
Madam Chairman, I have a question on some that are no longer funded, for instance, county emergency fund.
Basically, with, we can levy, but we decided not to levy this year because we have 130 some thousand in that and we can have more, but with trying to give the property tax relief, we didn't put one on this year or last year if I remember right.
I guess as long as you still have an emergency fund.
Yeah.
We still have it.
We still have it.
Always a good thing.
Yeah. And the last time we had to spend it was to demolish a query school and it depleted all of it, so we had to put it back on for a couple of years, so. And the special assessment fund, in case you're questioning that. We have a little bit of carryover and we haven't had any paving done except for what we do through the city for parking and ready. And so this year again, we won't have to put another levy on for that because there will be a little carryover from the previous years. So we usually contact the city to make sure we know what type of paving they're doing or what they're going to assess us, so we don't have to worry about that. And I don't know if everybody knows the senior citizens, we haven't levied last year or this year because the state's been kicking in 87.5%. And as long as all of our senior citizen budgets will lay it together or more than one mill, the state will continue to reimburse us the 87.5%. So we haven't had the levy on that because of our carryover in that fund. And then when the state's going to reimburse fashion, this coming 17. And same with not just we, as long as the budget is three mills, the state reverses us back about, it's like 24,000, 35,000 again.
How much, what will be the actual value to the job development authority at the 1.39?
37.060 is what the mill is worth right now, I don't know what range. Is that what you're asking?
So.
Okay, she's requesting 53,000, but we give her some state aid and power communications, so that offsets what we levy.
And is that how it's historically always been?
Usually they just levy, in the past it's been one mill on what the rural mills worth. But they've been gradually increasing what they want from the county.
And why is it just a rural mill that is the?
Because the city levies also rural job development and you can't.
And they, and they levy property tax for job development?
Yes.
The city does?
A sales tax, it is.
Okay, I know they give them sales tax, but I wasn't aware that they also gave them
Yeah.
Property tax.
Okay.
Yeah, we levy separate rural tax on job developments, library, airport.
And not just we?
Not just we, yeah.
If you kind of look at this scenario I gave somewhere within the city, this rural mills comes off, it's just these mills that are outside the city, it's this one, but then the state is down here because the state's including that split until it's there.
So I had Betty run several estimates of increases on different scenarios. One was on, one that was on a home in the city and that home actually had some improvements done on it, so its taxable valuation went up quite a little. And the estimated tax increase on that is about $265 for a year. However, if you had no, if you live in the city limits and you had no improvements on your home nor the value of your home went up, your taxes will actually go down. Not a lot.
Because they dropped their mill, right?
Like because the city dropped their mill.
Yes.
Then when, then I had her do a couple on quarters of land and one of them was in, up in the Webster area, 120 acres. If you'll recall, the county, the commissioners did an increase of 2% for rural farmland. We get to, in order to stay inside of the 95 to 105%, we did, we did it 2%, so we'd be at 95%. Is that correct?
I think it was 23.
Well, it fluctuates a little depending on the value of the farmland. The more productive, the soils that are more productive are a little higher and those that are less productive are a little lower. But on 120 acres, and this is up in the Webster area, pretty, pretty good productive farmland, the increase looks like it's about $42 for the year. With this nine and a half, 9% increase that we're talking about tonight. So it's, it's a little confusing to the average taxpayer because they are assuming that their taxes are going to go up 9%. That's not the case.
It's a 10-year formula and then NDSU takes out the high year and low year, closes it out and averages the rest of the years. And the actual sales indicate that the value of farmland has gone down fairly significantly in the last two years, so those should play the formula and we probably won't see an increase in valuation and stuff in the next couple of years, especially with the production being down this year. Or production might not be down, but the income will be because of the commodity prices. So we can probably expect residential values and commercial values to keep continuing and we're gaining ground on that by new construction and everything, but we've got to be careful because ag land still contributes, I bet you 40% to the tax base of the county.
It's 42%.
And, and if we don't get an increase, if we don't take an increase there, then you know, any programs that want to increase values or anything like that are going to directly direct mill levy increases. We do have some, I think we have some exempt properties that are going to come in to play maybe some bigger ones in the next couple of years, so that might offset some of the problems that we see. The agricultural land traditionally takes a couple of years for it to level off after you see the huge spikes and increases and delegations, but ag land duties have actually went down two years in a row now, so I think that's going to moderate. And this been going up, it's pretty good, 2, 3, 4, and 5% per year for the last.
For the last four years that I've been there, it's historically gone up every year, but quite a lot.
So that adds to our profit pretty significantly.
And we don't want to get in trouble with the state by being without, outside that 95 to 105% and that's why we brought it up so that we could be within that 95% range. Then I, there was another, then I did a random home with a $388,000 value and there was a pretty significant increase in the value of the home over the year, but their taxes, and this is outside the city, the Nutsiacas or Panfire, their taxes went up $96.28. On a $388,000 home. So homeowners aren't going to see significant increases in their, in their taxes on their lands. Are there any other questions to come?
We need development in our community, that's what's really keeping us focused.
Any of the commissioners have any questions or anything they want to add to this? Any other commissioners have any questions or anything they wanna add to this? The, we won't finalize our budget until the October fourth maybe. Are there any other places in, in the budget that anybody has looked at that they think that we would be wise to try to work on?
I have one comment. I updated my spreadsheet on the LEC. And I think we can reduce it from a million to nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, three seventy-six eighteen because the board is not giving a half a mill to, right, just one mill. So that's close to twenty-six thousand, two seventy-nine. Probably closer to twenty-seven thousand. We just did some changes again, we added a couple companies. So basically, ten mils would be about five hundred and thirty-three thousand is a ten mill generates. And then the rest of the seven point four eight mils would have to come out of the general. So when doing that scenario, but they, yet they're gonna keep the twenty, approximately twenty-two thousand that we were getting back for the per day, I think we could probably at least reduce it to point seven five mils for general fund. So, but that's entirely up to the board because of the half a mill. And then redoing, this is the scenario I did for, if you wanna see it.
Okay.
This is what we paid so far
Yep.
to the LEC. And that's thirteen point seven five mils. And if I take the fifty-three thousand, or fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-two cents that we paid for the one mill, comes down to this. And then if I add on the twenty-two, which we're not gonna get back, this is what anticipated expenditures will be for the LEC until the seventeen.
For the seventeen.
Let's just wait and give us a chance to look over that stuff.
And that's fine.
And I, I think that other commissioners, I know I would like to have copies of this, that would be, that would be a good thing. Another thing I'd like the commissioners to think about is the garrison diversion mill. Boy, they spend a lot of money. Someone pointed out to me what this costs then to make. It's pretty astounding. You know, it's really a nice, really a nice book with, but what are we getting out of garrison diversion at this point in time? We're paying them fifty
It's in the century code.
It's not the century code that we have to belong to it. Well, then we need to change the section of the book. We need to get, we need to get a hold of our legislators and tell them, no more.
And you're talking to the wrong crowd.
Well, I, I realize that, but I think some of these gentlemen probably have a, a pretty good inside ear to our legislators. And, you know, I look, I look at what we've got and I'll look at garrison diversion over the last five years. And, you know, we got a directors per diem of ninety thousand, directors expenses of a hundred and fifteen thousand. Employees' salaries of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand a year.
There's a, I remember I looked through the, was there a page in there? I thought I saw a listing of the grants that were, went back on a per county basis. I don't wanna say the number because I can't recall off the top of my head, but I thought I saw a paper.
There's two thousand and fifteen approved projects. We got a new dock and fishing period at Lakewood Beach on Trailway. That's what we got.
I think over the years, through that MR and I money, Greater Rams and Utilities has gotten a lot of money to expand their services. And that was the whole part of the federal buyout of the garrison project to eliminate all, everything in the Hudson Bay drainage area. And then basically the state, instead of receiving the million that it was irrigated the farmland and, and, you know, the stabilization of Devil's Lake, they gave the the federal government bought it to the point of six hundred and sixty million dollars over some odd years. And that's why, you know, during the Conrad, Oregon, Long Island area, it appeared that we were bringing in a lot of money to the state because a lot of that money was allocated at that, at that time because those projects were expanding, you know, the Southwest Water Supply Project, Greater Ramsey, a lot of those rural water utilities providing water to rural communities was part of the whole garrison plan initially. And so when they weren't gonna finish the initial project as it was set for it, they put money back towards water supply projects. So over the years, you know, it may not come right to Grand County, but a lot of their rural citizens benefited from a rural water system. But it's still, you know, the fifty-three thousand dollars a year for a five thousand dollar matching grant to, for a dock or whatever the park board, park district got. And, you know, there's been little projects like that over the years, but it's, it comes with a lot of strings, doesn't it, Rodney? Because the Fair Board, we looked at it.
We had, we got a little bit from the conservancy one here, but we had to match it for, for labor, show that we, what we did, so.
I just, you know, I looked at it and I, so we, so the century code says that because we got something from them once, we have to pay them for the rest of eternity. I, I don't know if that's, if we're fair or right, and maybe it's something we need to bring up with our state legislators.
I think you bring up a great point because right now their main focus is the Red River Valley Water Supply Project and bringing Missouri River water to eastern North Dakota through a pipeline that may or may not ever get finished or allowed to be finished in the courts. So, you know, even though they're sucking water out from underneath the river, I think the state of Missouri and the Canadians will still have an issue with it. So the discussion last week in this market for legislative water meeting was, you know, could we possibly fight this before we spend a billion dollars and then end up in court for twenty years and allow the infrastructure to rust not being used? Could we start a piece of the project where we know they'd take us to court? And start that battle first? So, you know, they're aware of it. But it's, it's a great point because there's, what, thirty-two counties in the Garrison Conservancy District? And, you know, that River Valley Water Supply Project's gonna back that nine. And also, there's a whole bunch of counties that are getting short end of things and still contributing that one mill every year, just like Grand County is. But let's bring it up to our regional caucus. Won't do anything good for this budget hearing, but.
No, but it is something to think about, you know.
See if anybody else has the same issue.
I didn't, you know, I, I looked through the budget and was trying to find places that, that would, that we could take money out of and, and sort of doing it over the backs of our employees, which we have, we've made a promise not to do. And, you know, cutting our, our budget on, on the people who need the assistance the most. And you gotta look at all those other places. And that was one that really kind of stuck out for me.
It is a North Dakota century code, chapter sixty-one, point four oh nine. Because I'm looking at now the district budget, it doesn't, it doesn't specify that it has to be one mill. It says, the, the directors and the board of directors have to adopt the budgets. Beginning of July, such resolution shall levy in mils but not exceeding one mill, sufficient to meet all the expenses obligations and liabilities of the district as provided in the budget. So they don't necessarily, I mean, they get to set their budget well before us, just like anybody else that we would put being entity under our taxing authority.
I think, I think there was a county, I can't remember where, that wanted to get out of Garrison Conservancy. And they were taken to court and I think they lost. I don't know, Lonnie, if you're familiar with that or not. But it seems to me somebody brought that up to me and, and said, you know, and I can't remember what county it was, but there is a county that had the same consternation over the thing that, that we're having right now. You know, it seems to me they're, you know, one, one project focused. And the federal government is in the process of, well, removing their, their hands in some of the, the infrastructure that's currently there. Eddie County has said that Army Corps has indicated they wanna decommission the Rockford Canal and give it back either to the county or the county water resource district. And they're, they're not sure what they wanna do with it or can do with it. You know, it causes a lot of problems in Eddie County because it doesn't have proper drainage into the canal. And so it backs up water on, on the property. And they had several disputes over that over the years.
Yeah, and they tell me these are part of the district during gross century code as well. So, I mean, you can't just get out, you have to have it done legislative through this. But it is something to talk with the state as well.
It would be something to bring up with the regional caucus, but I mean.
They'll get down there, really, they start, you know, they're all walking the hallway and ask, ask around a little bit, see if anybody's got any issues with it. They're each a half hour long and most of them have their business done in fifteen minutes, so.
Anything else? And our special hearing? Going once, twice.